Good evening. I'd like to call to order the October 15, 2019 work session from the Thefton School District Board of Directors. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the name of this law, for the liberation of justice.
Public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcasting. An executive session of the board was held immediately prior to this meeting this evening in a high school classroom for the purpose of discussing a matter involving the employment of an administrative employee of the district. By way of attendance, we have all board members present with Mr. Navarette dialed in on the computer. For recognition of guests and scheduled speakers, I turn it over to Dr. Zerbi.
Thank you, Ms. President. This evening, there are no scheduled speakers. However, it should be made known that for the October 22 meeting, we sent the advertisement to the newspaper for the move in the location. As you can see, there are a number of awards, both M awards and staff recognition, that will require additional space than what we have here. So we're going to move the meeting for October 22 to the Arcola Auditorium. In terms of the remainder of the meeting, we go on to the fiscal items for conversation this evening. Mr. Bicker?
Thank you. For this month, we'll have the approval of the list of bills, the treasurer's report, budgetary transfers. There's three master plan change orders, all three of which are credits. School Resource Officer Services or U.S. Security Care of Blue Bell, which includes an extension through June 30, 2020, and a renewal from July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021, and a civil engineering Arrowhead Elementary.
So let's ask if there's any questions. The three items on the agenda for the master plan, they're all credits. These were reviewed in the property committee meeting. I don't know if there's any questions from members of the board related to this. Anyone to my left? Or any of those members? Anyone to my right? Okay. The school resource officers. So the agreement that we're currently with under U.S. Security Care is due to expire on January, I believe, 19, 2020. We received two proposals for that service, one from the existing provider and one from Cardinal Point, who also provides, as you know, Mr. Booley, who used to work for U.S. Security Care, now has his own company, and he has built quite a bit of support here for us in terms of additional safety and security matters. So he provided a response as well. Mr. Bicker, it's my understanding that for a full year's worth of security and access to the car, the annual cost between the two proposals was about $30,000. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
All right. And you can see that Mr. Bicker had suggested that we extend the existing contract so that we get our contracts with the service provider in line with our annual budgeting and our calendar. You will probably remember that when we first did the agreement with U.S. Security Care was following our agreements with Lloyd Providence Township, which works on a different schedule, and this is kind of a result of all that. Are there any questions on this? Yes, Mr. Winters?
Yeah, just a one-year term. This is just a one-year term.
Yes, they're one-year terms, but it's evergreen. With us giving a notice, we were asking for a 90-day notice to terminate in writing.
Is there escalation on the yearly amount that's agreed?
Not built into the contract. That would have to be negotiated each year.
I have a question. When you say access to the car, does that, are they maintaining the car? Like, where's the car expenses?
The car expenses are included in the overall cost here, I believe. Do you have the figures?
It's, right now, it's $924 a month, and they're looking to lower to $525 a month. It's two cars, and they're parked right now at the bus depot at the end of each day.
So they're...
They're their cars.
They're their cars that they maintain?
Yes.
And then this is the fee for use of them, like, kind of like a rental sort of a fee?
It's the charge for providing their SRAs cars, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And probably to be more particular, so this covers two armed school resource officers and two unarmed officers who are on campus on the, we'll call it the second shift, the after-school hours to man the campuses, both the Arcola Skyview Campus and the High School Campus, plus the two vehicles. Any other questions, Ms. Hall?
I just want to, I know we discussed in policy the school resource officer training that's been required by the state. I just want to reiterate, we discussed that by continuing the contract with U.S. Security, they are meeting all the requirements made by the state for the training?
In fact, that's an excellent point. So what we did was, we took the proposed contract and sent it to the solicitor to make sure that those new, I believe it's Act 44 requirements are in there to ensure that they are meeting those pieces. So that's why we don't have the contract for review at this point in time, but the idea is to make sure that there's nothing that we're missing as regards to that. I mean, our goal, our goal in all of this, we've developed a very strong relationship with the two armed police officers. And I say "we," not so much myself, but certainly the building principals that work with them on a regular basis, and the teachers and the students. So we're really pleased with the work that they've done. We're also pleased that they came in at the lower amount, because most, our biggest challenge was honestly going with another company. Will we be able to keep the people that we've made the relationships with? And that's one of the strongest things that we have regardless of the cost. So the fact that this came in the way it did, we feel that we're in a good position to continue moving forward with them.
I just have another question. Do the officers go through any kind of a review process with just about how they're doing, or areas of improvement, or areas that they're doing well?
They do. The company's evaluating them, but there's also NASRO training, national training, that they have to go through now as Act 120 where school officers. And that's something new that comes with Act 44 and Act 18, but they do that through their company as well.
Tim, you mentioned that there's a 90-day cancellation clause with notice. Does that go both ways, the district and?
Currently, it's 30 days. We're looking to extend that to 90 days, which they're not opposed to, and it would go both ways.
Okay. And then will the contract, what's the status of the contract and timing? Will that be available for review prior to voting?
We hope so.
Okay.
Mr. Navarette, I don't know if you have any questions? No?
Nope, not on this. I'm good. Thank you.
If there's no other questions on that, the civil engineer. So we had, as part of the contract with that KCBA, and as part of the work that we're doing with the development of the new Arrowhead Elementary School, there is a need for a civil engineer. And our process was organized by Fidavia. We received a number of responses. Those responses are being, the paper responses are being finalized either Thursday or Friday, and it's possible, and I may mention to Ms. Hall here just earlier this evening, that depending on that review, there may be a need for us to have an interview process, which will also, would likely occur on Monday. So as many of you may or may not know, we're kind of in an unusual position. I don't like putting the board, you know, this close to a voting meeting into a situation to, you know, take on a contractor, but Fidavia, who leads a lot of these processes, is really undermanned as a result of the temporary absence of Mr. Miller due to a personal matter. And I think many of you know what that's about, and we'll hopefully, when his return, we'll get back on target with some of these things. But we certainly, we certainly want to make sure that, you know, we keep this process moving forward with the development of the Arrowhead, newer Arrowhead Elementary School. Any questions on the civil engineer at this point? Yes, Mr. Earnshaw?
Do you have, like, a ballpark number for this going to be in for this? You know that now, or just roughly?
Do you have any idea that, what the cost of this is, or are we still...
Yes, I believe right now, I believe that will be around, somewhere around $100,000.
$100,000?
Yes.
Oh, all right, okay. Because this states, associates with the construction of a new Arrowhead Elementary, and my concern is that, I don't know, there's been, there's been a decision to build a new school, correct?
I think that decision will occur once all the bids come in, and, yes.
Right, but my concern is that how far down the road on spending is the district expecting to be before that decision occurs? Because KCBA, I believe, this fiscal year was approaching a million, and now we're at $100,000, and I don't know what else is coming after this. So you don't want to get, you don't want to get too far embedded where you've got such amount of spending towards building a new school that it impacts the decision, because if you decide not to do it, you got a lot of money that's being flushed away.
So I think what you're asking me to do is to properly word the agenda items so that it reflects only the work that's associated with...
I'm asking that I think some sort of decision needs to be made before the spending gets to the point where there's no decision to be made, it's kind of decided for you.
Well, I think that...
By virtue of the amount of money that's been invested.
I think I understand what you're asking, but I believe, once we made the decision to start the design, schematic design phase and move forward with the plan that KCBA put before the board, that was absent of any land development matters. So it's required that if we were going to get the proper information for the board to make a decision and to put bids out on the street, if that's so the desired outcome, a civil engineer needs to be on board, and a civil engineer would need to help in the development of those land development plans.
So then, to clarify what I think Mr. Earnshaw is asking, is then, the civil engineering services that we would be approving, is it purely for the construction of a new facility, or is this civil engineering services that would be required regardless of the construction that is happening?
It would be only for the construction and the planning. So I think it's really for the planning part of this, not necessarily for the construction.
Right, but it's...
I'm trying to read, I'm trying to understand.
But it's only for a new Arrowhead Elementary School?
That's correct.
In other words, if we, for some reason, were then not, if we were talking about remodeling, renovating, not building a new school, we wouldn't need this. I think that's what Mr. Earnshaw is saying.
That's correct.
So by virtue of this being on the agenda, does that lock us into...
Can I just offer one thing? If we did, if the school district did move on for a renovation project, we likely would have to still do something. Anytime we get into a major renovation, they would be looking at stormwater, how we're handling it, maintaining today's codes, just like if we were doing a new building. So while they may have a little less of requirement, I still would anticipate that that would be required.
But it's my understanding, and maybe I'm wrong, but it's my understanding that the board gave KCBA the direction and the administration to move forward with putting a schematic design together for the construction of a new building. And so I thought we got beyond the conversation associated with either new construction or renovation, and that we're moving down the path of new construction. I think I understand there might be some challenge to the way this is worded, and I can certainly correct that, so that it's greater, has greater specificity to lock us into only the period of time for which we need civil engineering services prior to the acceptance of a bid. But I don't know how else I would, or I don't know what else I would have them do if they're not working towards the same path that KCBA is working towards in terms of preparing the documents and the information necessary to put bids out on the street to see something in, potentially in August of 2020, or, yeah, 2020, for consideration.
Okay, thanks. I mean, I guess I just misunderstood the path that we're taking on this project, so it's fine.
Are there any questions on matters of finance? If not, I just want to make one other note. Please remember that the Finance Committee is scheduled for this Thursday, 10:17, so there are some items on the Finance Committee that might actually show up here. So I just want to make you aware of that, and as soon as we know if the committee wants to move something forward, we will apprise the board of that. Next personnel items, Mr. Regina?
Thank you. We have a number of items for the board's consideration this evening. We have two items under classified resignations. We have one item under job description, one item for establishment of a classified position, two items under the employment of professional positions. These are both replacement positions, one for the Spanish teacher at Arcola and one for the .5 ELD teacher at Warchester. One is employment of a classified position, one classified uncompensated leave, and six for supplemental contracts. And just a little background on some of those. The first one is from the activity list that we approved last month. These are some of the activity positions that are being filled now. Some of those were new positions. The second one is an addition to the mentor list. The third one is the event supervisor for the winter position. This is the individual that's fulfilling the fall position and is doing a nice job at the moment. Four and five are both for the technology individuals that are fulfilling some of our requirements, the absence of the director of technology. And six is the hiring of a new wrestling coach. One item for classified substitutes, and one item, excuse me, one item for volunteer and one item for community education.
Any questions from members of the board?
Just small. I had talked to Dr. Zerbi that there would probably be more winter coaches and other supplemental that, for next week, which is fine, and, but I wanted to, I assume the head wrestling coach is different, because they start workouts, they need to start ASAP, and that was a process? And then my, yeah, go ahead, if you...
No, no, that's...
That's correct, right? And then, is there any, at the Education Committee meeting, I think in September, there was not many vacancies in winter coaching, other, not many at all, but I know things can change. So I just wanted to know where we were.
It's a good question. So first, the head coach question, which is a good one. We've discussed this for quite a while. So what'll happen is, when we put out the initial list for coaches, you get the full list, and that comes out to you at a specific moment in time in the board agenda. Anytime we hire a coach before or after that list comes out, it's going to be important for us to add it as a separate item on the agenda. That way, we can approve it, and you can see that. But furthermore, for head coaches, it was very important for us to put head coaches on this list, so the board is aware of who those head coaches are. So even though the list is going to be coming out this month, it's important for us to list it separately on who the head varsity coaches.
And then, do we know of any vacancies?
The only vacancies that I'm aware of at the moment would be the assistants for the head wrestling coach, who will be hired, the assistants.
Gotcha. And then, one, only other question is volunteers. It looks like from this rather lengthy list, we're all set and good with all the issues that were going on with some of the requirements.
With the serum for the TB test?
And then, it doesn't really matter, I guess, but if the, if they're, if you're a volunteer and you're just renewing your volunteer status, do you still come up on this list, or is it only if you're a new volunteer? Does anyone know that?
That's a really good question. So I'll confirm that for next week, for sure.
And I was just curious, because, you know, I mean, we do approve this, so I just was curious if we were approving only new or the people re-upping. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on these? Mr. Ryan?
I just wonder if we could get a little bit more background. I know it's discussed in the Property and Transportation Committee meeting and then in our board memo, but around the transportation specialist, you know, what we're thinking, why that's coming up, so background there.
Mr. Bicker?
So currently, some of the functions that are eating up a lot of the time throughout the district, there's the coordination of the athletic trips and field trips that get done. They take roughly 10 to 15 hours out of the athletic department's admin with the doctor...
Speedway.
True. Mike, all I can think of is I haven't had a baby. With him moving into the principal role, she's going to be doing more and more of that type of work and alleviating that. There's the efforts of calling for late buses, that's done in the communication office, that can be done. There's the parent responses that I get, probably five hours a week at least to handle parent questions, and there's the special needs and work studies and stuff. There's a lot of tasks here, there, and there. It should be really coordinated into one position that oversees that management, regardless of who does it, you know, who the person is that fills that position. They're going to be able to, they're going to need to be able to communicate with the parents as to what's going on, to be on the first line of defense, check the route, someone is going to oversee, because when a route is changed, we have to also look at it and review it. It's not just that they, for students, making a change and we don't look at it. We have to look at it to make sure it makes sense, and it's not impacting other schools. So there's a lot to do with that stuff that can be pushed out of, I'll be honest, a lot of it out of my area, down into that position.
Yeah, I think while there's a number of tasks that can be consolidated and help a number of people out, I think the board should recognize that while we had a really good start, and Mr. Bicker being a big part of that start in transportation this year, it certainly wasn't without time and effort. And certainly, that time and effort, while it's come down a little bit from the beginning of the school year, there's still stuff that I'd rather have, and I imagine members of the Finance Committee, as well as members of the board, would rather have Mr. Bicker doing. And just two things here. A, I think he clearly has recognized all of the nuances in terms of the operation of transportation through his investment of time and energy into this, so I appreciate him diving into this and doing the work that he has done. But certainly, that's not why we hired him. We certainly hired him to supervise and direct that work. He now knows the work. He needs the support, and bottom line is, we think this is the right thing to do, to get him the necessary support, so he is, you know, the tier-two, tier-three type of support when it's called for. So we hope that, you know, that makes sense, and while it helps athletics, and while it helps the communication office, it's, in my opinion, it's really allowing him to do the work of the business director.
Just one more follow-up there. In terms of the cost of this, it seems like there's, it's not a full 12-month position. It's only a seven-month position. Is that what we're proposing?
It would only be seven months for this, the remainder of this year, and then it would be a full-time position thereafter. So when I was doing the budgeting in the memo that was provided, by the time we get it posted, and I'm assuming someone would be potentially hired early or something in December, end of November, December, so for the remainder of this school year, it'd be seven months, but then it would be a 12-month position.
So the total cost of this position would be about $81,000 then?
Yes.
For a full year?
That's with full benefits and PUs and everything, yes.
Any other questions on matters of personnel? Mr. Earnshaw?
I'm sorry. Go ahead, listen.
Thank you. When I was looking at the job description, there was some, I just, I don't know if this normally goes in a job description, but I would like to see something in there that emphasizes the importance of delivering timely responses and of tracking all the incoming issues and the resolutions.
I don't see why we couldn't add something like that to the job description, especially the second one. The first, the first one might not necessarily be, because there might not be a good time... The second one definitely, because that's a task, and we can certainly put that in there.
I guess, worded however it needs to be worded to...
By the time, the fashion, not a number?
Maybe not necessarily a number, but just to, because what I did notice was that, you know, this person needs to be able to handle periods of stress, and so we need to just emphasize that...
Response.
The timeliness of the response is very important.
Good, thank you very much. Any other comments on personnel matters? Mr. Earnshaw?
Yeah, regarding the transportation specialist, I thought that the, what ended up being titled as the accounting specialist was going to pick up a lot of these responsibilities that are outlined in the job description, and you discussed in response to Mr. Ryan's questions.
So the accounting specialist is still keeping all the accounting. They're taking care of all the invoicing, all the invoices from the third-party vendors. They're going over the receipts and approving those, and are going through the healthcare reimbursement. So there, all the accounting functions associated with this position is still being handled by that position. None of the routing work was ever to be given to the accounting specialist.
No, but I thought like a lot of the, some of the scheduling and responding to questions or addressing emails, that was within that job description.
I don't remember them responding to emails. They do help with the scheduling of third-party vendors, but that's more because of the billing associated with that, to get the pricing and putting out the bids associated with that. But they don't have anyone else that responds to parents other than myself right now.
All right. And then I, just one other comment on items, M4 and 5, the technology administrative task. I've had countless situations in my career where there have been open management or staff positions where employee, remaining employees have to step up and take on some additional stuff, and there's never been supplemental contracts nor salary adjustments in those situations.
Yeah, I'm certain that, it's been my experience as well, but I'm recommending that these two individuals who do not have any, they belong to the exempt employee group, they do not have any, you know, management, they're not in any management or supervisory role, nor am I suggesting that their job titles be changed. I mean, we've done some of this in the past, where we've had some folks have job title changes and take on a number of other responsibilities along with a stipend or a supplemental agreement. In this case, these two individuals are working directly with me to manage the items associated with technology, and until such time, we have a director of technology to take bids on. So I am assigning them a number of different things, including some disaster recovery stuff. As you might be aware, there were some matters that occurred in the county with another school district. We took swift action, so they've been, they've been stepping up, and certainly, I need a certain level of eyes and ears on what's going on in the district, so that they can get the direction needed in order to get, for us to stay in a good position. I think we are in a good position, and this is a way to recognize their effort as part of that. Any other questions, Mr. Winters?
Ten M3, related to supplemental contract for the supervisor for the winter season. We certainly had a lot of discussion over this over the last few months, and we postponed approving the winter season, I think, August. I'm not sure exactly which period that was. So it was a, we wanted some feedback on how this is working. So it was a, we wanted some feedback on how this is working, and is it working properly? What are the pros and cons? I know you said that he's working out well, but I don't know what that means. So a little more on the meat.
Sure. I know we held off on the spring position to evaluate the fall and the winter, so we wanted to make sure that we hired for fall and winter both. We posted both of those about a month and a half ago, looking to hire both of them. So we made sure we hired the fall last time. We wanted to make sure we hired the winter, because the winter season will start before your next board agenda in November.
Yeah. So I understand the timing, I guess, but I'm looking for feedback on how it's working out with the coverage, how it's working out with the high school principals, those type of things.
I had the opportunity to speak with Dr. Sorgini and Dr. Spiewak about it both, and they're both very pleased, both with the individual and the service of the event supervisor, having them at events, how that's working out. It's proved to be an important role for them, I think, and also getting a lot of the stuff delivered in a more administrative way with that individual at the events.
But I think what we promised to provide to the board was, after the first season, we would be able to provide you some more definitive information in writing, and we're not there just yet. But we plan, we certainly plan to do that, because I think some of the issues were, what are some of the tasks that are being done? What does the schedule look like? How many hours per week are we looking at? And I think at that point, we also want to be able to share with the board whether or not our experience, while whether good or bad, is an experience that we want to continue moving forward with long-term. Because I think that it's important that we all recognize that we needed a temporary, I'll call it a stopgap, to address a couple matters, and we need to be able to recommend to you whether or not that process should continue, not only into the spring season, but theoretically, if it's going to be into the spring season, what about for the next year and the year after that? And so we've been having discussions about that. And likely, we will be incorporating our recommendation into the budget process.
Any other HR questions at this time? If not, move on to curriculum and programs. Dr. Catona?
Good evening. We have a couple items under curriculum and programs this month. One is for course proposals for the 2021 school year. The first item is for the development of a statistics course for grades 11 and 12, and that would be a full-year course, and that would be new. We have, also have recommendations for taking out European history from grade nine and instead developing a Global Studies I course for grade nine, and removing World Cultures from grade 10 and replacing that with a Global Studies II. We also are looking to add AP German for grade 12, as that would then bring all of the world languages on a level playing field, since German does not currently have AP. And so that would be a new course. We also have some courses to be removed as a result of not having, being undersubscribed over several years under English, Sports Literature and Acting, under Family and Consumer Science, Singles Survival and Steps, and Underworld Language Levels Four and Five Academic, and we would just keep the Levels Honors for Four and Five. We would still have Academic and Honors at Levels Two and Three, but when the students get to Level Four and Five, then that would just be Honors, and then, of course, we would have the AP. And then we have a number of items under curriculum for approval, different course, a number of courses, 11 different areas in which we have courses for your approval. As I reviewed with the Education Committee last night, most of these changes are prompted by, they have not been written either in a while, and so there are a number of changes due to the standards, whether it's state standards, national standards. Some are prompted by college board changes, such as with the AP courses. We have the Tech Ed in grades Five and Six that is a new course that was approved, they are new courses that were approved last April. And so the entire framework of the curriculum really comes down to being changed from the standards to essential questions, assessments, competencies, and materials. And that is what we have for your approval.
Any questions for Dr. Catona?
I have a question. I just wanted the rest of the board to know that last night, we had lots of lengthy conversations about many of these things. I mean, feel free to ask questions, but just so that you're aware, the four board members on the committee were there, as well as Dr. Sorgini and, of course, Dr. Catona, and we asked many questions about lots of the courses left in Family and Consumer Science, which there are many. We discussed the involvement of the world language teachers and the involvement of the social studies teachers in these decisions, and I know that all of us felt very comfortable. Just feel free to ask questions, but this was a lot for curriculum, and I just wanted to make you aware of that.
Questions for Dr. Catona? Mr. Ryan?
A couple questions. For the Global Studies courses, can you give us a little bit more information about what that course entails?
Well, Dr. Catona is in the process of looking at any information up. You should have received an email from me to the location on our share points with all the documents. And please know that those documents are for you review as part of this decision-making process, but because we believe that that work is not only the work of our teachers, we believe that it's, you know, stuff that we don't post out for the public to, you know, consume or for other schools to steal. So it's for, I know that sounds silly, but we pay people to write these things, as you know, and we believe that, you know, we provide a high-quality education, and part of that is the design of the curriculum and the work that the teachers do on that. So I just wanted to make you aware that all that information is at your fingertips.
So thank you for asking that, because when I brought it up, I realized that I need to change the title here. It should be Global History as opposed to Global Studies, which is how it's worded in my notes here, and I missed that because we talked about it in two different ways a couple of times. So it would actually be Global History. So they would be looking at, it's described as providing students with knowledge and skills to begin to understand complexities of the world through different perspectives, examine standards-based themes, including conflict and cooperation between groups and individuals, influences of continuity and change, and the role of important people and places in history, look at developments that have shaped our world and their cultural legacies, and looking at today's globalized world.
Thank you. And the other one, and actually Dave kind of touched on this, for the curriculum for approval, I did see that email and the documents that were there. There must be like 100 documents or close to it. Did the Education Committee, like, go through all of these? I mean, I know that as a board, we have to approve this, but 100 or so documents to review in one week, I don't know that I have enough time to do.
Yeah, we sent the link out about two weeks ago prior to the Education Committee, but I don't, you know, I understand that. It's a lot of material.
I went through it. Am I going to tell you that I read every single word of every single document? No. I'll be honest, I did not. Did I go through it? Yes. Will I continue to go through it? Yes. But, I mean, that's why we have top-notch administrators and educators, and I did bring up, this is why it was so expensive, quite frankly, because we have been, you know, we've been approving these, this work, and it was nice to see the work. I read through those that I felt I was, that were newer, and like the tech studies, the ones I was more in touch with, like ELA and things like that, that I would be able to see if something was awry.
And one last question. Along those lines, how much of this, I think you said it was, had been updated in a while? How long is a while? In terms of, you know, did some of this stuff not exist at all?
Precise.
Did some of this curriculum not exist at all for certain areas, or was...
The Tech Ed for Five and Six did not exist at all, and there was, there had not been a curriculum for the First Aid with CPR and AED. Everything else existed, but anywhere from six years on is what a lot of this was, what we are looking at with a lot of the curriculum in terms of how long it hasn't been written.
And that's typical, just so you know, that's typical of the curriculum writing cycle. So it doesn't mean that they wrote it six years ago and it's coming to you now. It means that in its typical cycle of review, along with the textbook cycle, this is what is before you.
And we did, I did review all the documents, but we did say that you're going to provide that summary. Are you going to present that at the, that what we've reviewed at the Education Committee summarizing some of the main points that you were going to, or was that going to just be provided, what we discussed at the education?
Yes, there was a summary document. If the board members from the Education Committee think that would be important to...
I think it would be, because I think it was great highlights. You just run through them and provide them what we did, you know, it was great synopsis, and it would provide him with the insight, I think, he's maybe looking for.
Yeah, we could certainly do that. We can get it on the agenda for presentation next week, if that's okay.
Sure.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Any other questions related to curriculum? Mr. Enshaw? I'm sorry. Hold on. No, 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 no. Miss Hall, sorry.
I wanted to ask about the removal of world languages, levels Four and Five for academic. Do we have a decreased enrollment in those classes? Or, and if this is, if we're moving to only honors, are we then continuing to have the requirements to be placed into those classes?
I will have to check on the question about the requirements to be placed into those classes, but generally speaking, when the students are getting to levels Four and Five, they're really taking those courses because they know the language, they really want to grow in the language, and they're looking at something perhaps ahead in college or something along those lines that's really going to help them out. So when we have the academic level in there, and really, the numbers are small, and then you have to make decisions, are you teaching an Academic Four and an Honors Four? And we had that discussion a few years back. Do you put an Honors Four and an Honors Five together? What does, you know, or an Academic Four and Academic Five? What does that look like? And really, in terms of requirements of colleges with world language and what students need, they don't, you know, they don't need to be continuing that far, but the ones that are very serious about it, and the honors will really meet their needs.
I just think my concern is if this is going to be rolled out next year, that sophomore class is the largest class in the school right now, and I'm just wondering how many students would be impacted by that decision.
And I apologize. I asked about that, but I did not ask the way that you asked. I did not, I, what I asked last night was, would we, would this mean certain children could not take the, would that deter children from taking the class? That's how I asked it. I didn't ask it as the requirement way, and the response, you know, as Dr. Catona said, she has to look at the requirements, but the response that I was given was that anybody taking a Level Four or a Level Five is already pretty, maybe not fluent, but very, very high. And that's, but I appreciate you asking that, because I only, I just asked, I didn't want kids who wanted to take it and then to not take it because it was honors. Does that make any sense? But I didn't ask about the requirements, so thank you.
And I will say anecdotally that my experience has been that when you get to levels Four and Five, it's not the same as if you wanted to take an Honors Math or an Honors Science, where you have to have a certain grade and all of that. It's much more about teacher recommendation, and it seems to generally come out of a mutual agreement between teacher and student as to the student's ability to be placed in that class. So it may not be necessarily you have to have, you know, a 90% or higher or something along those lines. It's much more about the personal relationship at that point, because we're dealing with small numbers at that level.
And I will also add that the reason this is on the list is as a result of every October, we've come before the Education Committee with the undersubscribed report, and this is really, as I believe Dr. Catona mentioned, a, really a compromise to making sure that all of our language are aligned with the proper sequencing, and that it does provide students with the path to take a number of years of a specific language. The challenge, the challenge is, you know, we can continue to operate these classes, and they'll continue to fall on, in some instances, fall on the undersubscribed list on a regular basis. So that's partly why you're also seeing, it's not purely an academic recommendation as it is, we can provide the needs of the students by removing the sections and make our scheduling more efficient, and still give access to Level Four and Level Five, just that the rigor of those courses is going to be different than what they've seen in the academic structure. So I hope that helps. Members, Mr. Winters?
Yeah. Two quick questions related to, three. I think we have an AP World Cultures. Should we be currently in our curriculum? Do we have an AP World Cultures?
An AP World Cultures?
Yes.
No.
Well, then I could be wrong.
No.
I guess my question was related to, it's an Honors course. So, okay, I apologize, it's only an Honors. So these will also have Honors associated with them as well, so that is not listed?
Yes, they will also have Honors associated with them.
And then also, since there is a transition period of changing in the curriculum, I imagine there's a transition year, that there are some things that will be taught in different periods than they had.
Yes, I'm actually going to be meeting with the Coordinator, Mr. Sussman, this Friday to discuss what this would look like in terms of ruling this out because of the change.
Any other questions? Mr. Enshaw?
First on the curriculum, I had the same concern as Mr. Ryan. I opened up one folder and saw 25 documents, so this is a way to get through in a week, but I'll see what I can do. Regarding the course proposals, the costs, will that be filled in before next week?
I don't expect that it would necessarily be filled in before next week, because right now, we're going through the process where everyone is looking at, you know, what would the cost of textbooks and so forth be for the budget, but I don't know that I will have them. I may be able to give you an idea by next week, an approximation.
Can we provide a range or...
Sure.
To exceed?
Yeah, I think that could be.
Okay. And then my other question with regard to the course proposals and the courses to be removed, the staffing impacts, if any.
Can I re-ask my question? There is an AP Human Geography course that's available from 10 to 12 grades. Is this, it does know it...
No.
But just want to make a clarification. So, Mr. Enshaw, we'll have a dollar figure, either the anticipated cost or the cost not to exceed, but in addition, you talked about whether any of these have staffing impact, and I thought you said something else, and I...
No, my question is whether or not the, I guess there's two new courses, and then there are some courses being removed, and I'm wondering what the impact, if any, of staff is, on staff is.
Yep, we'll get that for you.
So I, I'm sorry, I can speak to the statistics at least. They're approximating, just looking at this year...
They're approximating, just looking at this year, about 75 students that would have been eligible if we had a statistics course in place now. And basically those students would then be coming out of other math courses, other, three other math courses. And so it would be something of a wash by putting in the statistics course because right now they're taking other courses to fill in a math that they, it isn't what they necessarily want, that a statistics would serve them better. So it wouldn't impact negatively or positively on staffing with statistics.
Any other questions on matters of curriculum? Ms. Rotten?
I just want to say, I do see the curriculum writing summary that was presented attached to the agenda here, so that's it.
We will present that next week. Just as, as a summary, that's a good recommendation. Anything else on curriculum? If not, we'll move on to the next item, which is policy. You can see that there are a number of policies, 12 in total, that went from the committee to first reading, but for your approval next week are nine policies, including alternative instruction, admission of students, attendance, withdrawal from school, health exam screenings, employment as superintendent, assistant superintendent, assignment transfer, educator misconduct, and school volunteers. Are there any questions on the, on the second reading or first reading of policies that are before you? Seeing no questions. Under other gifts and donations, please note that there's one listed, to accept a gift from Ann Ford of a baby grand piano to be used in accompaniment for musical rehearsal at Arcola, value of 1,450. Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna fix that?
Yeah.
There, there are likely to be two other gifts that will be on the agenda, I believe. If you notice, there's a check presentation that's scheduled from the resident foundation of Shenondale, so that'll be on here as well. And you may also notice that in front of you, there are shirts that are part of a donation from AXA Financial, who is kind enough to provide shirts for staff and our two large contractors, both the bus drivers and our Aramark employees. So we're really pleased to know that from Amanda Kelly and her work to develop the logo for Be The One and a theme for this year, we're planning to wear our shirts on Friday. You can, you certainly join us if you happen to be in the area, but we'd love you to be a part of that Be The One process. So take some selfies and post them if you got a chance. And that, then we go on to trips, the high school UN club to New York City on the dates listed, cost of the district $696.60 for two substitutes. The next one is approved trip for the Mathacton High School Varsity Basketball Team to Wildon, New Jersey on the dates listed, the cost of the district is $300 for the registration fee. The third one is approved, the Arcola Skis Snowboard Club to Jefferson, Vermont on the dates listed, there's no cost to the district. And the last one, under trips, is approved trip for the Mathacton Varsity Baseball Team to Orlando, Florida, dates listed, there's no cost to the district. Any questions on gifts and donations and trips? Yes?
I just wanted to confirm on that last one for the varsity baseball team, there's no cost for substitutes? Because that seems like an awfully long period of time, it's a whole week.
Yeah, I believe it's typically over, there's a holiday built in there.
Yeah, it looks like it's the week that we would typically, we're, we're closed for three of those days, but not all of them, so I just wanted to.
Yeah, I don't believe, I, I believe there is, there's only one employee who's, and no, and no teachers, that, that coach that would be required to be, have a substitute. While we have multiple assistant coaches, they're no longer teachers, however, a few years ago they used to be.
Thank you for that confirmation. So with that, we'll move on to dates for board members' calendars. We have our regular slate of meetings for the remainder of this month and on into November. Does anyone have anything for old business? Seeing none. Yes, Mr. Enshaw?
Dr. Zerbi, I know, over the per capita tax, I know it's on the agenda for Thursday's Finance Committee meeting, but have you had a chance to talk to the townships at all?
I did. So in my conversation with Worcester Township, now again, please know that I did not go before the Board of Supervisors, so this is just a conversation with the, the Township managers. But if, if we were to proceed forward, it's, it's, with eliminating, it's, it's likely based on Worcester's estimation that they would probably, you know, no longer collect the tax either because of the, it would actually cost them to do that, given the fact that they only collect the dollar. In terms of Lower Providence Township, it was suggested to me that if the board was interested in, in this, that, that the township would be interested in hearing how they could participate in the cost sharing of the postage and the administration of the, of the matter. So I was hoping to bring that up, but Finance Committee, as I said, I would, but, and I will, I think we need to get, you know, some direction on that. That doesn't necessarily solve our problem altogether, as, as many of you recognize, but that may be the next best step in a, in a compromise if in fact, A, we wanted to reduce our overall cost associated with this while keeping the tax in place. I believe the township would, would want to keep the tax in place and, again, the manager's not speaking with the supervisors, I just wanted to make that clear. But in our conversation, he, he thought that it would make the most prudent sense to, you know, approach the supervisors and ask for that rather than getting, rather than seeing us get rid of it.
Anything else under old business? Okay, so for new business, I just wanted to let everyone know that next week on the agenda, we are planning to add the renewal of Dr. Zerbi's contract. It's not on there right now, but we are working out the details so that it can be added prior to the voting meeting next week. Does anyone have anything else for new business? Great. So with that, I will open it up to courtesy of the floor. Dr. Malik?
Help you guys understand that, you know, you run the district. It's your responsibility to oversee what's going on here in the district. Because from what I hear, you know, people are cherry picking documents to look at that are going to come before you guys here at the board level. That's kind of in my mind a dangerous precedent to set because that's how Skyview got built. Skyview got built because the board relied on people other than themselves to review the facts and the findings. And then we got stuck with a $39 million building we didn't need. So, you know, if it's, if it's easy enough just to say, well, I'm going to rely on everybody and their expertise, I could be a board member. You could have a high school person become a board member. Be easy, just listen to whoever tells you, you know, what they want to tell you. So that's food for thought. At the Finance Committee, we were informed that for 1819, there's a $2.8 million surplus. Did you, did you know that? $2.8 million surplus. I thought we were going to fix that problem. Didn't fix it. That means that the taxpayers paid $2.8 million, too much in taxes, because that's what a surplus is. You have anything you want to, you know, say to the taxpayers about 2.8 mil? Or was it last year, the year before that, 1.6? You know, this is like four years in a row now. Oh, 2.6? So, you know, I can't keep it straight, there's, you know, the amount of surplus in this district is, is incredible. The last meeting, Mr. Ryan talked about the Shenondale project and his concerns about the solicitor and how it was being handled. Now, you guys know you can go to the Parthenetary and, and check out the docket page, right? Because really what happened is in 12, 2006, the suit was commenced by somebody named, last by the name of George, of the firm Hughes and Kalkenbrenner for the Mathacton School District. Not Mr. Bartle. And he was in charge, by the way, the solicitor at the time in 2007, my recollection, it was Sweet Stevens. Mr. Bartle doesn't come on until 2013. So from 2006 to 7/11/2013, there was no action on this suit. Zero, except for maybe lawyers withdrawing and appearing. Nothing, discovery zero. Then Mr. Bartle takes over, they have extensive discovery, and then basically they do a trial recipe two years ago, which means he was ready for trial two years ago. Well, he can't control whether they book him for trial, so he was on this thing a grand total of four years. Four years. The worst thing you could do is you got a lawyer who's ready for trial, knows the case inside and out, and then replace him. That is, in my mind, irresponsible. Okay? Can't do that. So, you know, you can't criticize Mr. Bartle. Four years is pretty much, he's doing his job. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Malik. Anyone else for courtesy of the floor? Mr. Andrews?
I was very pleased to hear our superintendent say that next week's meeting would be at the Arcola Auditorium. You're not going to fill that room up, so he won't be violating the fire code in terms of occupancy limits. A week ago, not, yes, I'm sorry, at the, at the last September meeting, I appeared at 7 o'clock but could not get into the room because of the crowd, and there were no, no agendas left. So also, a week from today, I hope there are adequate number of agendas for the public. Last evening, Dr. Sargini presented the list of under-subscribed courses numbering 43. The same number as on the draft doc, similar document a year ago. And I think that's way too many. And, you know, I think it would not surprise me that at the Hill School or other private schools, they would not be having classes of five or six students. It's, you know, it's, it's not that critical in the big picture of things as to whether you take German or French or Italian. And we hear, we hear of many cases in Europe of people who are multilingual in all of those languages. So, and I think where, I think there's some overlap where, rightly or wrongly, I think there's some overlap between AP courses and honors courses. You know, if there are six in each of those in, let's say, German, you know, I, I think we should be teaching one or the other, and then you'd still have 12 in the class, still under-subscribed, under the 15. And I think in, in recent years, we've been adding AP courses. We might have the most AP courses of any district in the county. And is that, I'm not sure that's for the benefit of individual students or, or for bragging rights for the district. I was surprised to see that next week's agenda has a contract to hire a civil engineer for the Arrowhead Project. I think the Arrowhead Project is, is still very much in doubt based on the facts. I think enrollments are, are not going to be as, as, as growing as people think. Without, without some new housing in the district, enrollment would, would continue down. And I think the, the current projected level of approved housing, it, it may be on the flat side rather than expanding. I think the finances are still very difficult. And relative to the finances, we're, we're about a decade since the last recession and...
Thank you, Mr. Andrews.
I just want to say that with regard to the recession, it's coming sooner or later, and it's going to impact school districts as well as a lot of employment situations.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews.
Thank you.
Mr. Bickelman?
Joe Bickelman from Audubon. I had a question last month about the disbursement of funds to the California University of Pennsylvania for two 700 level courses, and the board expressed interest in it, and Mr. Bicker was going to look it up, and I wonder if I can get an answer tonight.
I, I know we don't typically do it this way, so I apologize, but it's, it's a difference in terms of the type of personnel, the type of staff, and the level of staff who are taking the courses. So certainly labor groups, we reimburse certain labor groups, we pay in advance. It's, it's a matter of collective bargaining.
What, what labor group was it? Who did we pay in advance for?
It's administrative group.
So it was for a number of people, the courses, or for one person?
It was three people.
Three people?
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. I attended the Education Committee last night, along with two other people that go to every board meeting, Mr. Andrews and Dr. Malik. There were also some teachers there, three, I think three teachers, and one parent. And I found what the teacher said, they were, they had some serious concerns about things in their classrooms, consultants that were used for, what was it, RAS kids or something that came out. There was a kindergarten teacher there that spoke out against it. She said she wishes she had those three or four hours back from the time she spent with the consultants. There were teachers there about the wonders program, had some complaints about that. There was issues with staffing of a person, of a teacher at Worcester that works 10 to 2, and they said they weren't getting much out of that person because of the hours from 10 to 2. They were hardly seeing any of their kids, I believe it was a special ed teacher. They were hardly using that resource to affect the kids. So there were a number of teachers there that registered some complaints, and I found it interesting that that went on. I thought it would come up through the ranks somewhere, through like a curriculum council or something to rectify it. And there was also a parent there that said they didn't have any Algebra II text to take home in the son. So there was an issue there about that, and there was no online availability for the student with Algebra II. So these things came up from the audience members. Like I said, three or four of them were teachers. I thought the discussion on the plan for full day kindergarten presentation next week went well. I hope full day kindergarten addresses an issue. I hope full day kindergarten addresses an issue. I hope there's an objective, a target, that we have that problem, and we think full day kindergarten is going to solve that problem. I hope full day kindergarten just isn't a thing that we do because everybody else is doing it, plus it's 2019. So I hope there's an issue that full day kindergarten addresses. You know, kids that have problems, but we're in an affluent community. A lot of the parents send their kids to preschool, pre-K, they spend time with their kids, so there's probably a small percentage of students that need full day kindergarten or that need help, as exhibited with the T1 program that existed in the past. Mr. Winters questioned things like that, you know, what's going on, how many, you know, kids might need it, you know, who's involved in pre-K and, and things like that. So I hope it's a target for full day, you know, because we are in a good district, we not, we're not in an urban, inner-city environment where everyone needs it practically. So I hope there's a target, I hope there's an objective that full day kindergarten is going to attack and solve, and I hope you get the parameters and data of that problem, number of kids that need help, who needed help in the past, and ask your current kindergarten people or first grade teachers what the problems are and how many kids there are that need it, because it's almost a million dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Bickelman. Anyone else for courtesy of the floor? Okay, any final comments from the Board? I just wanted to clarify one point about the benefits of the AP courses versus honors courses. So while there may be some overlap between honors and advanced placement, I can tell you from personal experience that the, the curriculum is not identical. They are aligned to very different standards, and the benefit to our students beyond, you know, the image and reputation of Mathacton is that these students are earning college credits while they're still in high school, and at a very steeply discounted rate, because the cost for the AP exams is significantly less than the cost for a college credit. So that is, is just one of many benefits of the AP program that we have here, that, that I think is, is a, just another great example of what we have to offer our students. So if there's nothing else from the Board before we adjourn, I'll take a motion to adjourn. There's a first and a second, and the meeting is adjourned. Good night, everyone.